Okay. A round of applause, please, for our board. Here's your certificate here for actually being us in a president's public meeting. Okay? Now, the other part is that we also have an application for it. Excellent. Sorry, I know what I'm gonna do. I apologize. But you do it right here real quick. Just have to smile for like two seconds. Come on back here. Over here. Okay, got that on the first thing. I gotta get my glasses on. All right, congratulations. All right. All right, recognition of visitors and paper comments.
One. Eric Walz. You had a couple of things I wanted to say. First one is, and it goes back to when we sit in this room right here and plan all the facilities to our west. And I'm gonna pick out and point out the cardio room. When we talked about building that room, it was talked about it was told to the public it wouldn't cost to use that room or charging for that room. I didn't like it last year when we charged for the room. And I spoke up and I said that. You have a contract coming up, which at that time, contract was in place, but pipe law, make your own law, whatever you want to do. Make it an ECA. Pull the monies from there or come up with some kind of idea because my recollection for recollection at that time was that the toll to the public that they'd be able to use that wouldn't cost them. Feel strong about that, always would. The second thing is, it's on your architect that you're gonna approve tonight. I'll say a couple of things. Fool me once, shame on you. Fool me twice, shame on me.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Walz. Do you have a comment? All right, additions to the agenda?
Yes, you do have additions to the agenda under personnel. You do have under letter A, we do have a retirement, number four, and then we also have number five of resignation. You have those in your packet as an addition. I wanna go ahead and make sure that you have that added to the personnel packet as appropriate as an addition to the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the addition to the agenda as presented. Second.
Motion and a second for discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Most. Motion is approved. Consent agenda.
In your board package, you have the consent agenda as stated, letter A through J. If you have any questions, please ask at this time, otherwise I'd ask for a motion so that we can go ahead and approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, item A through J. I'll second.
Motion and a second for discussion regards to the consent agenda. Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Aye. Most. Motion is approved, five zero. Any state recognition awards?
Yes, we do have some recognitions this evening, and I do have a young man, Mr. Luke Spogel, if you'd like to come up and let's pick this off and recognize those who deserve to be recognized.
Yeah, first, we lured this guy here under false pretenses. Lure was used on purpose, did he? Come on up here. So it is my honor here to recognize you for your incredible impact you had on Indian Creek High School through your leadership of our bass fishing club. When you stepped into our program, it was still in its infancy, just a year or two old, and it was really struggling to find its footing. And then what you took off and built from there is nothing short of remarkable. From the beginning, you faced the unique challenge of, and I've talked about this before here with you, what is truly amazing, you need adult boat captains for every pair of kids, not just captains, but then those captains have to have a boat, and you find people to do that, not only volunteer their boat and their time, their weekends, often driving hours away for these fishing tournaments, entire Saturdays, Sundays, just to support our students. So just as importantly as that, you made sure that no student was left out because of their financial barriers. You saw, or you sought out sponsors like Honey Creek Tackle and those connections with local businesses. So your tireless work, you ensure that every young person who wanted to fish could participate fully. And so what started as a brand-new, floundering club is now a dynasty. Under your leadership, Indian Creek, a school of just 600 students, became the four-time defending state champion, defeating much larger schools from across Indiana. You guided our students to compete at the national level, where this past year, one team proudly finished 39th in the entire country. That kind of success speaks not only to skill, but also the culture you created, one of opportunity, teamwork, and relentless commitment. Not to be lost on you here, hopefully you understand that your work with the bass fishing program perfectly reflects the larger purpose of high school, helping students discover passions, build confidence, and learn lessons that go far beyond the classroom. Through fishing, you gave them an outlet to grow as leaders, teammates, and problem solvers, while also showing them the power of community and perseverance. We're excited to watch you take the next step in coaching the Franklin College Bass Fishing Program, especially with your son Carson competing there. Your legacy here will endure, not just from the championships and the trophies, but in the lives and the countless students who found purpose, belonging, and pride through bass fishing because of you. So on behalf of the entire Indian Creek community, we thank you for all you've given. We truly make a difference.
Yes, you were completely duped. And feel free to go ahead and talk greatly because that's what, uh, the difference that you make, but you do have, of course, our certificate that
Thank you.
For the difference, and of course, we have a district certificate as well, but we'd like to do at least a photo op.
Oh, please, absolutely. So. And I'd like a time to brag too.
Yes.
You can't do that, three pictures.
Thank you.
Yeah, please.
You can put your thing too, I'll first have. You have knowledge, we appreciate it.
Well, thank you, guys. You guys are gonna be in good hands. I thought I was coming in here just to do a kind of recollection of 2025, but I got duped. But you're gonna be in good hands with Chad at board. He's been with our program for the past four or four years. The two boys on his, that he captains also, they're sitting second place right now in the MLF series, so they've got some really good competition that they're fishing against and are sitting really good right now. But I did put some notes together for, what was the compies this year, which blows my mind. Pretty passionate about this, so.
I don't have a tissue for you, though. I whipped you, you're starting to make me cheer up.
Oh, I'm sorry. We started this thing at two boats, and to get it now, we're 16, almost 20. It's pretty cool. We did well at Brookville. I think, did we get, did we win? You won Brookville. You won Brookville. Our juniors also got first place at Brookville. At our second tournament, we got first and third, and that is a back-to-back on the road, and that's hard to do. Carson and Henry Fleetwood had the biggest two-day weigh-in ever in the history of bass nation for high school. It was 40 pounds in two days.
Wow.
It has been so many days in one day, and what, 16 and that, something, it's crazy. 40 pounds, it was unheard of. Then, on the, on the second day, this is the coolest thing on the road, you're fishing against 80, 80 teams. And we got first, we got second, and we got third in the high school division. And then our juniors, we got second place. So I mean, we were parents all the way through. And then our, our last tournament was, well, that was state. And we got fourth or second. My notes, my notes are bad. Anyway, that wrapped up, that wrapped up Angler of the Year. So not only did we have Angler of the Year in high school, that's the highest points total you can get, and we've won it two out of the last three years. So Carson and Henry blew the doors off of it. Most weight ever weighed in by any of the high school kids for a year's tournament, a year-long tournament, and our juniors also got Angler of the Year, so it took two teams to nationals, and that's, that's pretty good. Then, the junior team got 39th, which you stated, the junior team got 39th out of, I think it was right out of 100 boats, which is outstanding. Carson had to fish by himself at nationals, Henry wasn't able to fish, so he fished by himself and still was like 160 some out of 250 boats. So that's saying something on one of the largest lakes in the United States, the Clarksville. And then, we were just up in Michigan fishing, my wife and I. It was, just found out that he is, Carson and Henry both are All-American, Academic, All-State in the Bass Master world. And that's, we've never had that in our team, and that's something to be very proud of. And then, they go on, if they make the top 12, they have another vote here in another month or so, and then that will be determined at the classics. So if they make the top 12, they get a free trip to the, to the classic. I don't know if that's to fish, I don't know if that's to get awards, we don't really know what that's gonna entail. That's a pretty cool honor, as, you know, someone now going to college, we have our tournament next week, so we're going to Kentucky Leg, so let's.
Get some food.
Yeah, and I wanna thank my mom, dad, my family for coming.
Since we're here, I just, why don't we, since we apologize for fooling you, if we would have actually everyone that's here to come up and take a picture with you front center. Since you were here, go ahead and promote them, we're gonna have them take a picture around so that we can go ahead and respect and appreciate you. We gotta balance it out, though, so we gotta put some people over here. Just in the front. Not one yet, but you will be. Talk people about. I gotta see you over here.
Well, I'm the captain, but.
But you know what, Taylor?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much.
Hey, JP, what did you fish with her?
Uh, that was.
And I hope, I hope that it's. Uh, I don't wanna keep you. So I wanna keep them, but you like it, cause that, you know, you have done so much work. I'll be cheering for Rachel's mom. Keep us close to you, please.
I know.
Please do. You're welcome.
All right. This, this next one, I did not lure here under false pretenses because I've gotta work with her, and she'd kill me if I fooled her, so we're, I'm thankful that you did come. So, Julia, it's my honor to recognize you for the September You Make a Difference Award. Throughout your 40-plus-year career, you have been far more than our counseling and athletics secretary, and you have been the gatekeeper, protector, and at times even the bouncer for the counselors and the principals who have been lucky enough to work alongside you. By protecting our time and our focus, you allow us to better serve students and keep the school running smoothly. What has always stood out most is the grace at which you handle difficult situations. No matter what came your way, a frustrated parent, a complicated schedule, or a last-minute curveball, you met it with patience, professionalism, and care. You not only looked out for the needs of students and families, but also consistently cared for your counselors, advocating for them, and on occasion, protecting them from an overzealous principal's pursuit. Your colleagues echo these same qualities. They describe you as cheerful, smiling presence, a comforting face in place, a second mom, a true friend, and the rock of student services. Many spoke about the way you lifted them up in their darkest moments, welcomed them as new teachers or new parents, gave them courage with your study encouragement. They remember your quick wit, your honesty, your cheerleading spirit, you were a cheerleader when.
For a little bit.
And your willingness to jump in whenever anyone needed help. One colleague captured it perfectly. You have been the heart of our school, creating a safe and encouraging place for all. Leah, you embody what it means to make a difference. You have supported generations of brave, and your legacy is one of kindness, dedication, and quiet strength. As Henry Brooks Adams once wrote, "A teacher affects eternity; she can never tell when her influence stops." While you've not been a classroom teacher, you definitely live the spirit of this truth. Though every student you, through every student, you welcomed, every counselor you supported, and every principal you protected, your influence has stretched far beyond what you could ever foolishly. On behalf of the entire Indian Creek community, thank you for your years of service, and congratulations on your well-deserved retirement. You have truly made a difference.
Okay, so we have a follow-up. How about you high school folks there? Come on up, we'll take a picture. Hey, now, all these fishing groups come up here. I gotta get a good group up here for, for this.
Yeah, one thing to say, not many people know this, but Leah used to babysit. 40 years ago, so fast forward 40 years to today, she used to babysit.
Can I get a picture? This is someone I've known all my life, and I, I count her as a true, true friend. I'm proud of her. I'm proud of your husband, too. Thank you so much. You're welcome. They're coming back again. All right, thank you. Moving on, public hearing, budget, the 20, 2026 budget.
Uh, yes, Mr. Arby, I recruited the young man in the back there, our business manager, Mr. Jacob Uke.
Yes, so for the public hearing of the 2026 budget, this is essentially just a continuation of the budget workshop that was done back in August. The budget numbers have not changed since that budget workshop, but to reiterate what they are, is this budget, the rainy day, would be 675,000, debt service, 8.4 million, education fund, 22.8 million, operations, 7.3 million. And just one thing to remember is that these will get adjusted downwards as we approach the final budget order in November. Expenditures are always projected high, and revenues projected low, just protect the district along the way. These will be adjusted as we.
Any questions for the board? Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
All right, committee reports. I'll start off with C9. We meet this Thursday night for our monthly meeting, but we did have, I'll have the margins here to be able to read it. We had one student of the month in exercise science, and that was Alexa Seating. Comments from, I'm not sure who the instructor is there, I can't really read the writing, but Alexa's doing a great job in class, she is kind, hardworking, and respectful. She did a great job in competing or completing her 10-hour OSHA healthcare council, keep up the good work, so. That's all I have to say on this time. Uh, Indian Creek Educational Foundation.
Yes, we just had a meeting this past Sunday, and Hannah has sent me a report of things to tell you. First of all, there were 12 boxes throughout the community, different churches and businesses to collect school supplies, and it was a huge success. Hannah has an unbelievable amount of supplies, and we are storing them, and then she's going to go around the beginning of second semester, when the teachers are starting to need pencils and paper and some of those things that have run out, and the children are using broken crayons, she's gonna go and resupply some of the needs that the teachers have at that time. Next Wednesday, she and Kate will be surprising 16 grant recipients, and we'll be awarding over $10,000 worth of crowdfunding grants this year. We have a wide variety of things that we're funding. The past Kate situation, the staff campaign has surpassed what last year's total was, and the staff will be giving over $14,000 to our foundation this year through payroll deductions and one-time deductions. So we greatly appreciate their support. Now, the big thing, I hope you've been studying and watching Jeopardy and all those, all those question shows, next Wednesday night is trivia night, and we're hoping to get a few more tables, and Ray, I hope the band mothers are.
I can't be there, but I told them to do it, I don't know, I'll need to talk to them.
Well, I hope so, cause you guys need to defend your titles, and the second-place team has already signed up, and they are gunning for you. They have been working and hoping to take away your title.
All right.
So, yes, catch them now, I've been on Cindy Stewart about this too, so trying to encourage you, but hopefully, it will be a fun night next Wednesday night at Dun Farms. So, I think that completes my report.
All right, thank you, Judy. Construction update.
Uh, yes, construction update. We do a marker calendars, obviously this is after the trivia night, but on September 25th, Thursday at 9:00 AM, we will have our grand opening, recognition of our greenhouse. We should have our signage up and should be in a position to where we'll be able to recognize all those groups, and we're able to help support the ability to get this off the ground and put this together, and I would like to go ahead and have that grand opening on the 25th at 9:00 AM. So we still have a few things working as far as a few odds and ends with the greenhouse itself, but also, construction's still ongoing with our locker rooms and our main gym in the, in the high school. That's a process which hopefully we can get done by the conclusion of fall break, so that's still moving along. Outside of that, I don't believe we have anything really else to report at this time.
Full business.
We have none.
New business.
New business. Letter A, consider action to approve Lancer and Associates Architecture for their services moving forward. Asking the board to approve that this evening. If you have any questions, please do so, otherwise I would entertain a motion.
No motion.
I hope that we approve Lancer and Associates as our architect.
Second.
I'll second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Yes, I would just like to say that we interviewed two architecture firms for the proposal with the addition to the new, to the intermediate school, and looking at a new administration building, we saw both presentations, and of the two, the most economical and best presentation was by Lancer.
Second, all those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? One extension. Motion is approved for one extension. Out of B?
Letter B, yes. Consider Neolov Volume 37, this is the, oh yeah, number, number two, it's its first reading. Requires two readings for it to become actual policy, so this is, there's no actual required here, so simply acknowledging publicly that you're having your first reading of Neolov Volume 37, number two, for you to peruse for that to become policy. That'll come back next month, which would then require more action for it to become actual policy. So we can move on from letter B.
Item C.
Yes, in your board package, please consider the action to approve MOU with reach for you.
I'll make a motion to approve the MOU with reach for you.
Second.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded, any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion is approved, five zero. Item D.
Yes, consideration approved, the Indian Creek Intermediate School 5th grade overnight field trip to Flat Rock YMCA camp on April 20th through April 21st.
I'd like to do that we approved the ICIS 5th grade overnight field trip to Flat Rock YMCA camp on April 20th to 26th.
And 26th, yeah, yeah, it's, this is till the April 2nd. Okay. Good eye, Kathy, wait, wait, track that down. Motion made and seconded, any further discussion?
Appreciate the teachers' willingness to keep those, go safe overnight.
Yeah, I had, I had a 5th grader go last year, and it was, the weather wasn't the best, it was kind of cold and rainy, and I think they were glad to get back home and they're nice and more fit than today, so. So, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion is approved, five zero.
Letter E, consider action to approve the FFA overnight trip to the state soils contest in Huntington, Indiana, and this would be on October 17th of '25 to October 18th of '25.
I'll make a motion to consider action to approve the FFA overnight trip to state soils contest in Huntington, Indiana, 10/17 to '25 through 10/18 to '25.
Okay, motion, second, any further discussion? I don't know about that, that might get right on in there.
But the fact that it's overnight.
Yeah, yeah, I, I didn't. No, that's right in.
It's a good steering point, right?
It is, Friday, Saturday, off the fall break.
Okay. All right, you have a motion, second, all those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion is approved, five zero.
And letter F, ask the board, please, to consider action to approve an appropriations reduction resolution. I'd like to thank the board for their support and looking forward to making a good stretch as we get to fall break. So let's just keep it going. Every day's an opportunity to get better. That's my report.
Amy?
Just a huge shout-out to the middle school. I heard the Home Room to Hunger, just did some really exciting things with all the canned goods. I, it was like over five hundred and seventy when I last heard. I know it made a huge impact for Kate and the food bank, so thank you guys so much for your efforts with that. And I heard that the grandparents' night was so much fun, I mean, just last night. So thank you to the intermediate school for all their effort.
Yeah, thanks a lot. It was great. A lot of folks there, came in and out pretty quick, and great. All right, I'm going to go to you, so do you just steal on your cover?
It's okay, I'm, no, I don't have a lot, just, you know, like I said, always something the teachers are great, but our staff's good, a lot of good things going on, and, you know, looking forward to that greenhouse getting opened up. They've been without one for a few years, it's going to be fantastic for the FFA kids and plus helping to help our community and our schools.
Kevin?
I got to spend the day with Purdue extension today for the fourth-grade county ag day. I was just kitchen mom and fed five hundred and sixty young folks and volunteers, and we have about a hundred and some that also dropped their own lunch. So we had a great crowd, we'll do it again on Thursday for about six hundred and sixty not, that we're going to feed, and then we'll find out how many are going to bring their lunch. But our FFA was there today, and I want to compliment them on such a great job. They, they really do put out the best that we've got in the county, I feel like. They usually do a great job, they're all polite, they're all very professional when they need to be, they have a good time when they need to be, and the kids just did a great job. I did ask Mr. Dunn what they were going to be doing in the near future, and he did let me know that they'll be doing pork chops down at Nanava at the youth leadership academy and at Hunter's honey farm in the near future. And of course, they're taking, he gets to Huntington for the soils coming up. He also said that, that their, at their next meeting, they will be packing military care packages to send out to the military camp. So we're doing a lot of good things there, and I'm proud of the FFA. And the rest of the school. And I have time to, you know, maybe know I was the first female there in the FFA. That was a long time ago.
Long time ago. They're watching now. There's some long timers here. Judy?
Oh, do you have things to add before I? Three pages? No, I always love this time to give a shout-out to all the things, exciting things that are going on. And you all, you know, I am the number-one fan in the Craig Davis Fan Club. And so I read that it was over seven hundred items that you were able to, to provide for the cleaners' food bank. And I think I've mentioned this before, but I'm going to bring it up again, that Craig does such a great job of helping our National Honor Society, or Junior National Society, be, do philanthropic things throughout our community. And I've heard that maybe there's going to be a Junior National Honor Society member or two at trivia night that's going to have all the answers that might provide an opportunity for some of you to do really well for a round. But that's just a rumor I'm sharing. And as you know, Craig is going to be presenting at the National Conference for Middle School Teachers. That's another plug for all the wonderful things Craig does for our school. But back to some of the other people. I wanted to say a special thank you to Jared and his staff for the great job they did getting buildings ready for our students and keeping our grounds looking beautiful this summer. A special thank you to Matthew Zupansing. I don't know if you saw the things about, he donated the sweet corn because the Indiana National Food Day this year was celebrating corn. So our schools had sweet corn on that special day. A special thank you to the Daily Journal for the two front-page articles, one about our newspaper and yearbook at the high school, and the other about our foundation and the grants that we're giving to our teachers to travel this next year. A special thank, thank you to Hadwell for the two thousand dollars' worth of equipment and supplies that they donated to our construction trade program. Also, congratulations to Kendall Kurt-Gurnsey, I believe her name is, for finishing eighteenth in the Junior National Diving Competition. And then just, oh, one other thing, the middle school raised over twenty-five thousand dollars in their fundraiser, and I love the thing that they're doing for enrichment for our students, one of which is bringing a troupe of dancers called the Echo Dance Team from New York for a competition for the students this year, which I think is wonderful. And then, teachers I know are always doing creative things in their, their classes and coming up with unique teaching techniques to bring life skills to our, to our students. And I noticed that Mrs. Stevens had taken her Design Two classes on a walking field trip to Crest Ridge homeowners and to look for examples of shutters and portico, porticoes, casement windows, and many other house features. But I think each teacher has their own way of doing special things, and we should celebrate how lucky we are to have such creative teachers. So that's it.
Okay.
I missed one thank you, and it's a very big one. Friday evening, I should have been here to greet a fifth-class reunion group, which my sister was part of. She texted me and asked me where I was, and I had to let her know I had headed to Charleston. I put it on the wrong week for the calendar to get inventory buildings, so I'd like to thank Luke and Mr. Wallace and, of course, Dr. Persky for covering for me and taking care of that. They really did enjoy it, and I really do appreciate them taking care of that.
They were a lot of fun.
They, I would hope that they gave gratitude.
I would argue they were better behaved then than they were fifty years ago.
They weren't, they didn't keep telling us all the smoking places they used to. All right, thank you, Kathy. I don't have anything else, I'll, there's a motion to adjourn.